Thank you all for coming out to the segment. We are part of meeting. Second meeting of the month, of August. Alderman. We have an amended agenda before us. And the amended agenda. We consider. Would I choose to consider amended agenda items five twenty-one through five twenty-five? Before we do that. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Chapman.
President.
Alderman Cunningham.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Present.
President.
President.
Alderman Chambers.
Present.
Alderman Chastain.
Here.
Alderman Lynn.
Yes.
The board may present. The items that is amended agenda. Item five twenty-one. Five twenty-two, twenty-three. Five twenty-five. In the public comment section, I will take the management on the tornado declaration. That can apply. I give a motion to accept the amended agenda.
To accept the amended agenda.
Mayor. Can I add just a quick item to the discussion line item? First responders cookout, and I'll explain it when we get there.
First responders cookout.
Yes, sir.
Under discussion.
Yes, sir.
Any amendment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Sebby.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight for my devotional, I. I've invited my mother-in-law. And there's no secret, she is the matriarch of our family, and most of all of us, well, I am proud of my mother-in-law. And two months ago, and why this is so special, two months ago, she fell ill. And she was on the ventilator for nine months. And she's nine days, I'm sorry, nine days, don't want to put you in the ventilator for nine months, but nine days. And that was incredibly traumatizing for our family. So we are so happy that she's has recovered and is on the meds right now and standing straight up and able to deliver this devotional, and she's no secret and no stranger to this devotional, but we just wanted to testify to the goodness of God and how great God is in from those nine days to standing straight up right now to give us this devotional. And we want to welcome Ms. Ann Pickett Parker. Reverend Doctor.
Evening.
Evening. My pleasure to be here today. God is so good. I have a witness, and it's good, I've been a witness a long time. But this thing that happened to me. I am ready to go. God. You know, so far, I think, and I'm country, and I'm city, and I come again, and so I thought tonight, I was seeing, um, here in the church, first. Later. Supposedly, the most happy love you had ever been, long time. He struggled with presenting, and the culmination of our life, I'm struggling, saying, I'm struggling with the person, they're doing a lot of study. We have nervous breakdown. You can connect. Who do want to say, still is that voice, all these, we need that. I think more than I tell to bond with life. So, you know. Now, if he was assassinated, then his pockets were stuffed with new sample. Oh, thank you, I know. See, this is literature, right? With the impact of peace. I think you agree with me, and we all need encouragement. If you read chapter ten, verse twelve-four, three, four, five, who said? How we may spur, um, to a love and good deeds. Not giving up needs as some are in the heaven. But it confirms. As all in the world, as you see, the day of God. Did someone come? That day, supported. There, there, and the pieces for coming down. They do not let anybody close their heart, come out of their minds. But always, when it's terrible, we want. Part of their need. That is, we don't so miss. It's a matter of what happened. They were able to live up to that in our homes, churches, and our communities. Don't go it alone. He was feeling twenty-five, once, not to give up needs. He's been going along. He gathered a group, he shared his life, and he asked his folks to watch and pray for the people, and he did it all. For Jesus. So, kind of support. We should, we should. So, I'm trying to think, we could, but the night, really intentional, about encouraging one another, as we follow these terms, yeah. So that no one has to go, yet, you know. I'm not saying I would be a natural. There were people off, thoughtful, good, and seven, and your neighbors. People around here, who prayed for me. I didn't talk about it alone, neither the evil of you. Let's pray. Oh, Lord, I can't. Your name is excellent, and all are with you. We thank you, making each of us into a room. Excellent. You mean. Every spirit of this city and every city, in all the image, being infinite. We thank you, for calling, you have given, it's why I must be good steward, your creation, the love of our nation, as our city. We have. We're called to lead the community in which we are, and we're. He doesn't strength to make wise decisions, and we're better, all not saying. He has the power to do what's right, and group and charity. He doesn't say it from all, all, and everything. Thank you, Lord. Thank you for your side, Jesus, thank you for saving us by our sin. In Jesus' name, I praise God.
Thank you. President. Our president.
We have a source. To the Father. Of the Father. In the Father's soul. The Father's team, and the Father's soul.
Thank you very much. We have one presentation this evening, and I would like to invite Honorable Lord Chapman to come down with me. It's his pastor that we are recognizing this evening, and. Dr. Parker, husband. Just give us a minute to come down, his sister, his daughter is here to receive this. I am, yes, I am honored. Fixed my signature in this certificate of appreciation. We would like for Dr. Parker to stand with us, and Pastor Parker's daughter. Alderman Chapman is a deacon there at New Zion. Pastor Parker has been a friend of mine ever since I've been here, and very supportive. He is ill, not doing well himself. We pray for him, and he get better, but. Just thought it would be fitting that we give him this certificate of appreciation at the time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certificate of appreciation, whereas Pastor James R. Parker was a minister of the gospel for fifty-two years, and whereas he pastored at the New Zion Missionary Baptist Church in Moss Point, Mississippi, for thirty-eight years, and served as first missionary Baptist Church of Escatahoum, pastor in Moss Point, Mississippi. Escatahoum, Mississippi, has pastored for twelve years. And whereas Pastor Parker served as legal redress for the Moss Point chapter of the National Association of Colored People, NWACP, and whereas he holds a bachelor's degree from Liberty Bible College, and additionally holds both a master's and doctor's degrees from Liberty Bible College, and whereas certified spiritual and marriage counselor, and has advised numerous pastors, ministers, couples, and laypeople. And whereas he is currently designated as New Zion Missionary Baptist Church Pastor Emeritus. And now, I Billy E. Knight Senior, Mayor of the City of Moss Point, and Alderman and Alderman do hereby present this certificate of appreciation to James R. Parker, pastor, emeritus of New Zion Missionary Baptist Church. For the infinite hours of laboring in the vineyard, teaching, preaching, pastoring, and counseling. We honor you for your tireless perseverance in serving God and justice you have shared with not only your flock, but countless others. May you always know what difference you have made and continue to make in the world by reflecting the love, patience, and joy of a Christian heart. And witness thereof, I am here to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Moss Point, Mississippi, to be affixed this fifteenth day of August, twenty-twenty-three. Signed, Billy E. Knight Senior, Mayor of Moss Point. The cake. Thank you, he's right up. Thank you. Who must overcame.
This is nice.
Yes, Mayor. Very good. Thank you so much for your patience. We're down to. The discussion of the department monthly report. I mean, Alderman, Alderman, is there any question for, you know, the board members from the department here? Any question?
I guess questions slash comment or comment questions under inspections. Or there is no report, and then we never have an attendee that we can ask questions. And there is a lot of things that need to be addressed by our inspection department that falls behind. The question I would have is, how long does it take them to review and deal with an issue? I've been dealing with this on Henry Street ever since I've been in office, two years. Mr. Bradford had it three years while he was in office, five years, and we still only review it. Give us some kind of report or address the situation concerning a major complaint that those people have in their neighborhood. So somewhere in inspections, we need to have come to Jesus' meeting.
Okay, we'll do that. Any other questions? Any other question of any department here? Okay. Thank you. What comments? Alvin. Yes, sir. Hold on.
So, I see the other, see the those.
Yeah, you talking to us.
Okay, yes, yes, um. I'm up here for a social, social challenge, because I don't have social media. I'd like, I'd like to contact Melvin Booker Jr., the one who, out of Moss Point High School, the former NBA player. And I need to contact him, because all these people in town said, well, I need to talk to him. But that's why I came here, so maybe I can get some assistance from your office.
Okay, so who is it you want to, you want to contact?
Melvin Booker Jr. He's a former NBA player at Moss Point High School.
Yeah. Okay. My school. You write it in.
I can, I can.
We can, uh. You don't have an email or phone number, you got a phone number?
Phone number.
Put your phone number on here so we can find you when we find that information out.
Thank you.
Give you.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
That's all, man, I.
Okay, all right, thank you for coming. If I would like to give the public board an update on the tornado. The hurricanes, I mean, the tornado declaration. All of you should have a, have a copy of this sheet, if you don't, you can get one. They will have one. This is. Fortunately, Saturday at, I got the text message from the, an email from the deputy chief of MIMO on Saturday about four-thirty, that the president has signed the proclamation, declaring that Jasper and Jackson County upon a disaster, signing a declaration for those two counties. What that mean is that we now have individual assistance. Individual assistance meaning families. And public assistance meaning. City public buildings. Debris pickup. Assistance and individual assistance. All of those that was in that tornado zone, that six square miles. May use this. To apply for assistance online, you can do it by phone, do it by downloading the Facebook app. What I would suggest to all of the people that would apply is that the best documentation that you can have to verify your damages. Is going to be helpful for you. Pictures. Receipts. Those are the two main items that you need to have, document your damages. Pictures. If you have before and after. Is going to be helpful. Then receipt that you have that's related to the tornado damages. Is going to be very helpful. The more, and the more effective your documentation is, the more support you're going to get. Let me caution you. You're not going to be made whole. FEMA is not going to give you a hundred percent of what you need to get your house repaired. Whatever the difference that you get from FEMA. SBA will also be here, whereas you're going to go into a low-interest loan, you will be able to get a low-interest loan, or at least apply. I can't guarantee anything, but you can apply for a low-interest loan. Later in the week. Our call center will be open. Or you can also come in person and apply. We don't know what date they're going to be here yet, MIMO came today, FEMA came today, and inspected the building. They are satisfied with the building. That is, the Riverfront Recreation Center, part of it is going to be used for that. They're going to be open later in the week. But we'll let you know, because they cannot give us an exact date at this time. We just believe it's going to be. So prior to that, you can apply through these means. And I would say for sure, next week. Or later than next week, you can come in person and apply at our Riverfront Recreation Center. And everyone that you will need to see will be in that building. Everyone that you need to see to get assistance will be in that building. We are told that there will be fifteen to twenty people that will be coming to be in that center to provide assistance. As soon as I know the more in detail, I will put out a statement about that. But we're waiting to get more accurate information about that. So just let me just ask you to also help us with. All that a rumor that we still have out there, we asked our pastors this weekend, and I got word that several pastors did talk about. I actually, I sent them a letter to help me inform our people the right information about what's going on. So now we know that it's not true that the reason we did not get the FEMA declaration before now, we found out that it's not true that the mayor did not fill out the paperwork correctly. That's what the rumor was. The reason we didn't get it is because the mayor did not know how to fill out paperwork. Ever from the Boulevard Casino to Mobile, Alabama. Which also ties into the fact that we're not selling the recreation center, we're not selling Pelican Land. That's also from the casinos, Mobile, Alabama. Sometimes we can be our worst enemy. Be our own worst enemy. So what I'm telling our friends as well, that tell me about what is being said, I said, okay. When things start unfolding different from what you heard, go find those same people and ask them what happened. So I had some friends to go to Brady's Restaurant and the hotels last week, oh, and those, it's ringing to say, oh, and, actually, the actual people. Moss Point just got that decoration signed, what happened to the paperwork that the mayor didn't fill out? And they can't give you the good answer. So please. Y'all help us with that. We had our consent agenda. Items four point one through four point. Eight. President of the board.
What's the number four point eight, Mayor? Um, finances is for three people, but only have two. Still, still going.
Uh. So.
Your finances is for three people, and two is listed here on item four-eight, is the third person still going?
Yes, either of these, the item, the person, so that's why it's specifically named, but it does list two people and the position of that person.
Got it. Consent agenda. Motion to approve, motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies. Aye, Sebby. Main agenda. Turning.
Bottom one, very fine recommendation by Alderman to the DUs as to rescind the appointment that you've handed on the Moss Point Planning Commission and appoint Anthony Thomas as planning commissioner for the regular committee, by Alderman.
So move. First, Alderman Chapman, second, Alderman Wilson. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Is it possible with the consent of this board that Ward One could have a representative on this planning commission?
Uh, yes, that was actually the very beginning of it. And everybody should present it.
Most of the people that's on there came over from the old Board of Adjustments, Tim said that he.
Not all of it.
Okay.
But when, when that was a Vegas, yes, that's what, give you that opportunity, but. Because this gentleman that he's recommended originally that was on there was the new one. And then he's not attending, he was not attending, that's why we taking him off and giving Alderman Dubois an opportunity to present another one out. That's what happened with this one. Am I right? You want to make a comment?
No, 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 I, look, I wanted to be, wanted to be fair and equitable, we talked about it earlier. Uh, the only dilemma I have is, I've, I've told Mr. Thomas already, and I didn't want to not appoint him after informing him, but, um, you know, when you made mention that Mr. Bailey is in our ward as well, you know, but of course, he was a holdover from that other deal. So that was the only reason that I wanted to make sure that it's equitable and managed. Have a problem with it at all?
Any other question?
Do we, uh, do we rescind this and put somebody from Ward One, or are we going now with?
We have a motion to vote to accept Mr. Thompson, pardon, Dubois's recommendation. That's the motion on the floor. Being unquicked. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies. Aye, Sebby.
Five point two, approved decline of request by Whit O'Brien to increase the June nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two tornado debris monitoring notice to proceed, not exceed that amount, three hundred and fifty-five thousand submitted by twenty eighteen.
Motion to approve. Is the question, Mr.?
Second. Most of Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Dunham.
Yes, sir.
Question, Dave, Alderman Chapman.
What affiliation is, is Whit O'Brien with Del Sol?
They're two different companies. Whit O'Brien was, went through the big process to be the debris monitor. They monitor, they go around with the debris removal company.
company and monitor the, the removal pickup.
They, they validate and I'm looking at the tonnage of which, what we're reimbursed for. You've got to have them for the FEMA reimbursement.
Okay, so we, so-
Del Sol is an administrative consultant.
Okay, I was trying, I was trying to get that straight in my head. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Justin Smith, on the, um, call if you have any questions for him. He's the representative with Whit O'Brien.
Uh, we have a motion on the second floor. There's general questions. All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point three, approved decline of recommendation by Del Sol Consulting to pay Whit O'Brien's invoice for debris monitoring professional service fees for the city of Moss Point tornado disaster in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two sixty-eight, seventy-five submitted by Trish's Big Ben City Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Dunham.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point four, approved decline of recommendation by Del Sol Consulting to pay DRC Emergency Services invoice for debris removal services for the city of Moss Point tornado disaster in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, one forty-five, thirty-one for work performed June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three to June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three submitted by Trish's Big Ben.
Motion to approve. Motion for Alderman Wilson.
Thank you.
Dr. Alderman Chapman. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point five, approved decline of request to pay Del Sol Consulting invoice in the amount of fifty-three thousand, fifty-five dollars for disaster recovery services work performed July first to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the city of Moss Point tornado disaster submitted by Trish's Big Ben.
Motion to approve.
Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Wilson. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point six, approved decline of request to pay all federal states in the amount of five thousand dollars for legal services for note accounts with two million dollars sitting in Moss Point tactical GO note series twenty twenty-three tornado emergency funding submitted by Trish's Big Ben.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Chastain. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point seven, approved decline of request to pay all federal lease in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five eighty-six, fifty-three for city reimbursement of the city's heat frame and in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for fifty, fifty thousand four hundred, fifty dollars and three cents for the radios assigned to the low-mo area. The funds will return from the state by rebate account and will be used to pay off the balance of the lease submitted by Mayor and Governor Director of Planets.
President of the Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Wilson. Any question?
Uh, gets a little explanation on the radios and their use in the low-mo area.
It's, uh, emergency radio. This is the radio for the fire department that purchase, I don't remember when they purchased several years, but the new breakage and banked each bank or ones that were created at the, uh, Rio and up north at this top.
At the fire station?
At the fire station, yes. They're the ones, they're the inventory of us, they're the various stations and the ports.
Any other question? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point eight, approved decline of request to provide a hundred thousand dollars in match funds for the Mississippi Main Street revitalization grant to be paid from the economic development department budget for two budget cycles. The grant amount is five hundred thousand dollars and then enabling a six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project to be undertaken to revitalize the downtown area submitted by Stu Wright, Executive Director of Moss Point Main Street Association. And just for clarification on that, the twenty-five thousand dollars is coming from Mississippi Power. Right?
Twenty-five thousand dollar total match. So we've got twenty-five thousand from Mississippi Power plus another fifteen from Mississippi Power, we're coming with forty. We just have to go through the, the process. I'm sure fifteen thousand is credited as a match, but that would be forty-two thousand, five hundred per budget year. We don't anticipate getting the money till at least August of twenty-four, maybe when they start the project in January twenty-five, fifteen, twenty-six. In the meantime, we can substitute, um, match funds should, another great source or another kind of like Mississippi Power, then if we could use that money first.
Any other question?
Yes, sir. So the money come from Mississippi Power, is that part of their one hundred thousand?
No, Mississippi Power has offered to give forty thousand in total. Take a hundred and twenty-five thousand that's required as the match, minus forty thousand from Mississippi Power, that would leave forty-two thousand, five hundred per budget year.
For two years.
For two years.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Should we say about two, spend the volume now? So we'll- I would say keep providing up to-
In the budget?
Maybe.
As long as it's reflected in the budget, as such, as such.
President of the Board. Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion for Alderman Wilson, second by Alderman Dunham. Any questions? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point nine, approved decline of request to host the National Bass Tactics Fishing Tournament in June twenty twenty-four. It's a letter of intent to the organization stating Moss Point's commitment to support the event submitted by Stu Wright, Executive Director of Moss Point Main Street Association.
Motion to approve. Motion for Alderman Wilson.
Second.
Second by-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Mayor, is this the one you, uh, that you, the guy you met with that liked it so well down here? Good deal. That's a good tournament.
All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point ten, approved decline of request to accept the lowest and best quote for the removal replacement of the phase-two sewer lift station fencing replacement project. Recommend the selection of Gulf Coast Spence Company with a quote in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars to be funded through the Modern Use Tax Infrastructure Fund submitted by Roy Hodgson, Director of Public Works.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman Chapman. Any questions?
Uh, one question.
Yes, sir.
Roy, don't you have several of these lift station fences in line to be repaired? This is just one of them that it's ready or?
Ready.
Even?
We follow the message that we get all of stations.
Uh, I was asking, I was asking about one over in the Somme Point area that's falling apart. I know there's one on Bellevue by the bridge that, it may even have tornado damage. Uh, so kind of as a follow-up to some discussions we've, some of us have had about spending the modernization money. We have a deadline that we need to spend a certain amount of it. Uh, do we, do we think some more of these will be done near term or?
Next list, so, four, five, I'm going to be submitting another list.
Another list? Okay. Thank you.
Now, I wanted to ask a question. Uh, Roy, the, uh, list that we turned in, I guess, for this, this, this particular fund, uh, we had a little additional street paving list. Is that a part of this?
It's not part of it, yes, but it will be. Okay. From- Or need to sue, oh, yeah, initially. Except for this, so the streets, two streets, we had, I don't know if it's Chicago. It took months in America. No one needs to have it. This county had been kept in the middle way into, um, still waiting for fishing. It didn't plan to just, I think I spoke with each other, young baby streets, uh, went to, and that gave, we're going to fall back. We have, we have a lot of money back. It's going to be in the-
County lift station.
Thank you, Mayor. I misunderstood. I thought this was just one lift station, and that's why, I knew you had a list of them. And, and that's what threw me off is I thought that was pretty high for one. So that's, it's nine altogether on this list. So your overall list, and pardon me, Mayor, has nine lift stations, plus you had some of the streets Tim talked about. You got several things on the overall list that you're working toward. Is that, is that right? Okay.
Unless you're a colleague, it's a general.
No, no, I understand that. This is just part of the overall list. That's what I'm getting at. Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Ladies, ayes.
Five point eleven, approved decline of request to accept the lowest and best quote for the directional drilling of two thousand linear feet of four-inch sewer HDP East pipe located on Highway sixty-three north of Interstate ten inside of the city limits. Recommend the selection of Post Underground LLC, the quote in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be funded through the modernization infrastructure fund. The quote is for labor and equipment home submitted by Roy Hodgson during the-
Second.
Motion for Alderman Chapman, second by Alderman. Motion for Alderman, second by Alderman Wilson. I would just say this, just, just without calling the name of a business, that we're doing this, Roy is asking for this because there's a business that's getting ready to locate up there, and we need this infrastructure there. All in favor? Ladies, ayes.
Five point twelve, approved decline of request to accept the lowest best quote for the purchase of materials to complete the Mississippi Highway sixty-three sewer line installation project. Recommend the selection of Central Pipes Incorporated. The quote in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred, thirty dollars, eighty cents to be funded through the modernization infrastructure fund submitted by Roy Hodgson.
So move. Second. What is, is, is anyone contracted to add a mark to material costs to keep the rest of labor? So that's why we're doing this. Murphy, you disagree with that, labor, what is this material? We have a motion in the circuit. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, Second by Alderman Chapman. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point thirteen, approved decline of request to accept the lowest best quote for the replacement of the obsolete odorization injection system located at the East Street Radiator Station. The system is, this system is required under federal rule, recommend the selection of odorization, odorization solutions incorporated and a full snatch exceed seven thousand to be funded through the utility capital outlet fund submitted by Roy Hodgson, Director of Public Works.
So move. Second. Motion for Alderman Cunningham, Second by Alderman Wilson. Any questions?
One question.
Who am I?
Remember, this is one, is this the same one as the compliance item we had on the list?
Come this, this, this.
That's, that's it.
Can't be pointed out that this is a refurbishment system, right? It's a, it loses seventy thousand dollars. This is a record of gun, it's all, this can refurb the price. See, this gun price.
Would the warranty?
Any other question? They just probably also maintain, maintain that system. We have three systems, I assume we got all three of them, or those forty years ago. This is, this is. There's no-
It's one you're doing the manual injection on.
But we, we didn't know that.
Sir. Mayor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies, ayes.
Five point fourteen, approved decline of request to gain the following vehicles as surplus and sales in the town of Goodman, Mississippi for ten dollars each submitted by Brandon Ashley, please. Two thousand and seven Ford Crown Vic, two thousand and ten Ford Crown Vic, two thousand and seven Ford Crown Vic, two thousand and eight Ford Crown Vic, two thousand and eleven Ford Crown Vic, and two thousand and twelve Dodge Ram.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Alderman Wilson, Second by Alderman Chapman. Any questions?
What kind, I have a question. What kind of shape are these?
They're all, uh, in line repairs, probably tires, but it's, it's where, chief, clearly came down and looked at and said, they're wrong. Chief, that'd be after the cars.
They have no car?
One or two, it's a small town.
I, I mean, I got you. We in bad shape ourselves. And the reason why I'm saying that, I got you. But the reason why I'm saying that is, I was wondering whether these surplus auctions, sometimes we get more for them upon other things, but I, I will not interfere with your judgment on that. Good city of, uh, Goodman. But they're going to have to look out for the good city of-
All right.
Chief, that's some beat up cars, one of that part. Getting the good, that's part of, getting the good deal, ten dollars. Ten, couple.
Crown Vic, ten's all. All in favor? All in favor? Ladies, ayes.
Five point fifteen, approved decline of request to purchase a twenty twenty-three golf cart at the price of thirteen thousand, eight hundred dollars from the cart shop to be paid with local seizure funds submitted by Brandon Ashley, please.
If you can tell what the purpose of this, so people will know what the purpose- I wish we're, we're going to utilize the mobility down and all the downtown fence that we have. Work on the parts, many city now, I think we used to have one also, move around all these fence. One of the problems we had, the reason I asked you just, uh, consider purchasing this out of seizure money with, last year we had an altercation on the far end of Main Street with young men that was playing the music aloud, and when my feet staff went down to action, we couldn't down, they didn't want to fight. And we called the cops, and by the time it took the cops to get there, it just took them too long to get there because they had no way to maneuver. This will hopefully give us a way to have a cop present there all the time and to move around to, to, uh, protect your people. It's our business that's coming, because, uh, we do have some people, unfortunately, that, that comes to cruise the coast. More than just cruise the coast. And so we have to be prepared to protect our business, that kind of mayhem. Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Did we do it? Motion second.
Did we get a motion? No, I'm sorry.
So move.
Motion for Alderman Wilson, Second by Alderman Cunningham. All in favor say aye. Ladies, ayes.
Five point sixteen, approved decline of request to hire a war, uh, banking division dispatcher submitted by Brandon Ashley, keep them, please.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Chamberlain.
Second.
Second by Chester.
Oh, Leonard.
Alderman Leonard.
Did you miss a couple there, a charge?
Mm-hmm.
On five, one, six.
About one, six, it's the one I just read, right?
No, no, ma'am.
Yes, it is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the old.
Looking at the old.
Had you gone a minute, didn't it?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Any questions? All in favor say aye. Ayes.
Five point seventeen, approved decline of request to hire a pit four- Five point seventeen, approved decline, request to file a temporary award for the position of athletic coordinator for the Parks and Recreation Department as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Committee's plan. Submit upon Judge of Director of Parks and Rec.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Order on, uh, motion of order on Chapman, Circle Baltimore, Chester. Any questions?
Got a question, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just as a follow up to our budget committee meeting yesterday, uh, could we possibly talk to this person and, and ask if they would be interested in, in coming over as a contract employee? Uh, we had some discussion about. Cost of benefits and all that, and, uh, sometimes you can actually pay someone a little more per hour. If you don't need to do the full benefit package. So I don't know if that might even be an option. Not questioning the hire, just saying. You know, how we do that. Could that be part of the conversation? I know we, we've discussed that possibility of, of, of using that method for many employees going forward, and it's, it's a money saver. We're definitely in a situation where we need to look for a few extra coins here and there. So I appreciate that.
We will make the motion with the other consideration as you discuss when you bring the gentleman on, you can rate that and HR start discussing. Salary, you may have that discussion as. Or my little suggestion and see how it plays out.
Mayor, you agree that would be a good thing to pursue? I, I don't want to interfere with what your plans were.
Well, we open to any option that would help us at this point because. You know, we are in a financial strain. So any option that we can pursue. You know, we're at the whim of an employee. If you got a good employee, these qualities there. It may be difficult to, to keep them if, you know, if. They may not want that option. So, but then you can have that conversation. And there's nothing wrong with having a conversation. I think we ought to have a conversation. And, uh, and you can just report to them when I found out it on the bus. Nothing wrong with raising that option and see if they're, they're buying.
Thank you.
The motion, no?
Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me. You got a doubt about this? It is. It's about this.
Need a vote?
We had a motion in a second.
Good one?
We had a motion in a second.
Okay. You know, the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Let's have it.
Five point eighteen, approved decline, request to accept the donation in the amount of ten thousand dollars that will like see Shucker as part of the chamber community fund. And to be included in the this year's twenty-three twenty-four Parks and Rec budget and by Donna Jones, Director of Parks and Rec.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion bottom on Chester.
Mm-hmm.
Second by the chapter.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
I would say that, uh, I was with, uh, our Park and Rec director on Saturday when, uh, the Shucklers presented us that, that check. And, uh, they did say that that was just the beginning of their support. Uh, that they would be coming over and, and riding around with us. Look at other things that they may be doing. I just suggested that we want them to do what they know how to do and that is that will fix up our baseball ball. So at some point they'll be coming over to let us know what they might be. But, but they were very generous in giving us this donation.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point nineteen, approved decline, request to add to household bids to make improvements to the most monthly subscription, health and wellness facility located at forty-one oh seven Three Old Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Bottom and Wilson, Circle Baltimore and Chambers. Any questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point twenty, approved decline, the document finding about his knowledge, they're going to prove the rest probably against your non-primal and.
Motion with, uh, an adjustment, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by the chest, uh, Chapman, second by. Just, uh.
Got a question?
Have, uh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Page, page three. Three, about three quarters of the way down on docket number six, 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 five. Rejuvenation Station. Uh, Attorney St. Paige, we decided to exclude that reference from any article related to the city of Moss Point. I hate to be difficult, but I, uh, I would ask that we remove that item from the docket, approve the docket and approve this as a separate item after we adjust that reference.
Wait, where does?
Please, the mayor and the board.
That is, this.
Third. Like the light bill for. The recreation station. Docket number six, six, five, six, 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 five.
I mean, if, if we don't pay the light bill, you might lose power.
I asked that it be removed from the docket. The reference changed and we approved it as a separate line item with the proper reference. From a legal standpoint, we, we voted never to use that reference.
Think you could probably just strike that reference and pay the bill.
Yes, we'll strike the name of it.
You, if, if, you can, but if you approve it on this docket, it's approved as, as rejuvenation.
I can name that old city hall. That's all you know?
You can name it Billy Knight Building if you want to. But not, not, I hate to be difficult, Mr. Mayor, but I, 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 I can't do this, this, this rejuvenation.
Still got to pay the bill first.
Uh, what's the, what's the, what's the president, but he struck it, uh, that one from the, struck it?
Yes. Strike the Peter as a separate line item.
Do a separate, you can just check, you just, that name is on our. It's not the name of, of the Mississippi power bill.
But you approved it on your docket of claims.
But that's name stricken out.
I believe the intention that the name be changed on the docket of claims. Mayor, I have this.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss St. Paige. Thank you, Mayor. Did we carry the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
With that striking.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Five point twenty-one, approved decline, request to partner with Jackson County as a sponsor and donor in the amount of five hundred dollars for the sixth annual power call peccary float on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, submitted by Tricia Thigpen City Park. This sponsorship will bring valuable advertisement and notice with city of Moss Point sponsorship will be paid from the advertising.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Oliver Leonard.
Yes.
Second of all, the chat.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point twenty-two, approved decline, name this state's local disaster assistance agreement for disaster FEMA forty-seven twenty-seven DR Mississippi for the city of Moss Point submitted by Tricia Thigpen City Park. This agreement shall be effective on the day signed by the state and applicant and shall apply to all assistance funds provided by or through the state to the applicant as a result of the references, uh, reference disaster.
To approve. Yes, second.
Motion by Morgan Wilson, Circle Baltimore, Chapman. Any questions? This is a standard procedure that we have to have an agent of record. That's what this is all about. Every year we have to do this. So, uh. You have to have an approval. Keep the same person, but you have to go through the motion of, uh, the board authorizing that person.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point two-three, approved decline, request to designate Tricia Thigpen as applicant Asia for public assistant for federal disaster number FEMA forty-seven twenty-seven DR Mississippi submitted by Tricia Thigpen City Park.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Morgan, Second by Morgan Wilson.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point twenty-four, approved decline, request to designate Crystal Rogers Deputy City Park as certified official and gang away park team as ultimate. Being forty-seven, twenty-seven DR Mississippi submitted by Tricia Thigpen City Park.
So move. Second.
Motion by Chapman, Circle Baltimore, Cunningham. Any questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point twenty-five, approved decline, request to select water engineer incorporated to serve as the industry consultant for the CD BG DR parking say that in either brand recommended by the CD BG. And they've been submitted by.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chapman, Second by Alderman. No. Any questions?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have it.
Five point twenty-six, discussion of beautification of the city, Alderman, Ward, David Chapman.
Yeah.
And first responders took out Alderman.
Mr. Mayor, remember the board. Thank you, Ms. Stickpen. Ms. Stickpen included a photo in your package. Ms. Jack is standing in front of the RTN six thirteen intersection from city of Moss Point sign.
Got it back up.
In. In consideration of the mayor suggesting the beautification efforts that the mayor has made. Uh, during the last administration. Wife was kind enough to help do this beautification project. And I, I sort of ran it by the mayor and the first lady so as not to, not to interfere with her beautification efforts that she, he approved and she approved of such a project. Now, the, the picture that you're looking at, those, those flowers along with, uh, I think, um, Miracle Grow and a bag of potting soil was about a hundred dollars. Just that little cluster. And I would like to, uh, approach her group, Mississippi homemakers, maybe an alumni, wannabe alumnus in the city, so we can adopt each one of us. Adopt one of these signs to do this same, same beautification type effort. Uh, and, and I want you all to understand, I'm not trying to interfere with the beautification efforts that are already underway in your wards and what you are doing individually. However. You got to pay for these flowers. Walmart was kind enough to, to, to donate, uh, these, these flowers to us at cost. So, uh, it's going to be somewhat of a partially effort, but I, the mayor wanted to do some improvements on the marquees and that's a matter of time. But right now we can do things like this and maintain them. Roy, you got to help me with water. Anyway, uh, and, and, and I'm asking the board. Now, I contributed, Jackie and I contributed this one hundred dollars for this small cluster, and I'm asking the rest of you to contribute as well for the signs on the south entrance of town. And the, the other two signs that we have. Whatever you donate is appreciated. So, and I'm asking each one of us to contribute because you guys are doing a great job in your specific wards, but the mayor and I have the whole city, so. We're trying to do this to help beautify. And I think it will, I think it will coincide with his intent and his effort to. Help sort of add a little color and flavor to our city limit signs until we can improve or do better marquees. That's, I'm only asking. That's. That's not, that's not a demand. That's just a, a request for anything you can do to help us. If you'll, if you'll approve it, the mayor has given us his blessing. I just need the rest of you guys to buy in.
I thought. Back garden club came. There was to. Take care of those or do that. I. Incorrect.
No, they done, what, I don't know. They just want a joke and then. Thanks. They've got that one. They, they did tell me. They did tell me. Get back to them. See, they told them. They are. We'll, we'll let Alderman Chapman know. So, uh, that company. But Alderman Chapman, are you asking, uh, these board members to donate a hundred dollars?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
You just kind of beat around the bush, you didn't.
I am.
And who did they donate it to? How do they make, how do they make that donation?
They can, they can make that, they can make that donation to the city. Once we approve it or accept it like we do all the rest of the donations, then we'll appropriate it as you see fit.
Any questions?
Aye.
That's three hundred dollars right there, Mayor. I'm holding you that three hundred dollars already. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Roy.
Thank you, Roy.
Any other discussion that we have is, uh, Alderman Leonard?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I got a call today. Let's keep him over. Uh, a year, he's having help out. With a group of being here in Moss Point. I, I, I was at work, so I couldn't talk for just briefly, so bear with me. And if some of you remember this or know who this group is, you, you can. Maybe buy some more information. But anyway. They, they do a cookout, like an all day cookout in one of the neighborhoods over here, and it's four first responders. Chief. Ashley may remember, I don't know, but they just cook burgers and such during, throughout the day, and any first responders could come by and get a, get a plate or a burger or whatever. Did, and this year they've asked if they could have permission to do it on September second between seven AM and two PM, right out here on the, on the green space. And, uh, he said they would not interfere with the FEMA operations down on the other end, but they just need space. They're completely self-contained. They don't need power and water and all that. But he, but, uh, it said he, someone had mentioned there was a three hundred dollar. Bill or fee or something, but he asked if, if they were going to set up to offer this service and, and what it would be is any of our first responders, any of the county first responders could just come through between those hours and get a meal. They'll, they'll be cooking out there. They'll set up their grills and they'll cook and serve from seven to, well, serve from, uh. Noon until two. They'll set up, they'll start cooking at seven AM and setting up and cooking. So I was just from, he asked me if, if last minute, but could I talk to the board? Now, we got until September second, so we may have, we have, no, we don't have none.
Yeah.
So we needed to decide tonight if they could be allowed to do that. Judge Willer would be the point of contact. For that. They just want to set up out here, grill and serve, and our guys can come through any of the county. Any, any, any first responder, it, it shows identification in Jackson County, they can come get a meal.
Mayor, those guys are actually from Ward two, uh, Joe Smith and, uh, and Cherry Bridges and that crew over there. Thank you. Always, always doing something in the community. First responders, and they just want that opportunity, uh, to be able to serve.
Yeah, the element, I think the element rule of common is usually in a facility is that if there's water, lights, gas, or something that is. That is needed is just about reimbursement with that. Beyond dollars.
That's right. And that's why he said they don't.
Not using any of that. They don't say they don't need any of that. And, uh, and based on what they are doing it for. You know, I don't see any problem with them being given permission to do it. They're not using any water, electricity. But, yeah, that. Positive, whatever they would pay was just to reimburse the city for that. And if they don't need that. Then my opinion would be they can use it.
That would be September second, on Saturday, September second, seven AM to two PM. Make a motion.
We need a motion now.
Uh, with that said. They can use it. Uh.
Got to make a motion.
With the, uh. Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about as a, as a day-to-day decision and I'm making sense. They're not using any water, I guess.
And so you could just, thank you, just contact you.
When they involved, and I'm saying they can use it.
Okay.
And I'll monitor that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh. Also, just a reminder, speaking of that, on the second, on the eleventh of September. You know, we have in a first responders banquet that is headed up by Alderman. Yeah. So you want to take any comments about that?
So you want to make any comments about that?
Got a meeting, we are. Yeah, we will have another meeting, but we got a meeting coming up on Monday to finalize everything on that, but basically it's something that we started back in the Groenfield administration as a thank you, more or less, through the mayor's youth council at that particular time, but we sponsored our first responders banquet, which would be an outlet for the first responders and their family to be able to come out and wine and dine with the.
And this will take place this year on, just coincidentally, nine eleven. It'll be at Pelican Landing, and we'll, it notices out to the first responders, and it's going to be inviting more this time because they came in to help us with the tornado, so we're reaching out to just invite other first responders that responding to us during that time to to come, so the numbers may be a little larger than before, we'll, we'll see. Extending an invitation to them just to thank them for helping us during the, during the time with the tornado. Okay. With that, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you all for coming.